As soon as he is done with personal call. So he is here. So do we have anyone that we want to remember tonight during our meditation and pledge of allegiance? Okay, can we all rise? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're next to approval of printed council proceedings for February 24th.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I would like to move to approve the February 24th minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Is Tracy Tanner here? Tracy Tanner? Okay, then here's for special ceremony to swear you in.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, if you can approach. We have Tracy who has applied for the Board of Public Service term to expire June 30th, 2028. She came before. The committee has significant experience and from the local community and was very impressive on her commitment to working with individuals with disabilities and individuals that could use some support in different areas of the community. And with that, I would like to make the motion to approve the appointment.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Next, we are on to comments by council members and the city clerk. Does any council member have any comments? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, I just wanted to congratulate you.
This is the second Saturday, the date that we typically hold our constituent contact meetings in the third ward. But we are going to partner with Southwest Action Group. We're going to meet at 3434 Pleasant Grove Road, which is the site of our Southwest Lansing Town Square. And we are going to conduct our kind of annual cleanup of that area. So again, if you typically come out to the constituent contact meetings, we hope that in lieu of that, you can come out and join us for the annual cleanup. Also, I want to thank Brett Kaczynski and Park Board members Mike Nibrowski, Tierston Walters, and Isaac Francisco, who is actually our third ward representative, all on hand this past Saturday for our first of four open houses to essentially provide input for the five-year Parks Master Plan. That is kind of being contemplated now and will be constructed in the near future. There are three additional opportunities, and I'm not going to steal the mayor's thunder because I'm sure he'll discuss that. Want to remind South Lansing folks, get into your favorite South Lansing business and remind them that we have a facade improvement grant program. We have three different, sorry, three different allotments. We have transformational improvement awards. These are dollar-for-dollar matches up to $30,000. Also, an aesthetic award, which is a $10,000, dollar-for-dollar match. And then there's also a design program award that actually does not require a match, and that's up to $2,000. But this is something we've done annually for quite some time now. And frankly, we have not seen, I don't believe, our fair share of dollars in South Lansing with regard to businesses. So first things first, we have to make sure that our local business owners know that this exists. They can go to lansingedc.com for more information. I'll say it again, lansingedc.com for more information. There is a pre-application deadline of, I think it's March 17th, and then they need the full application submitted by early April. I think officially, they're saying March 31st, but I think we're going to roll that to early April. And then lastly, there is a new, which is super exciting. There is a new program that the Lansing EDC is helping to facilitate. It's called the Southwest Thrive Program. So if you know an entrepreneur in Southwest Lansing, this has been created specifically for Southwest Lansing entrepreneurs. It's a free, four-week cohort-based program designed to equip Southwest Lansing entrepreneurs with the tools and knowledge needed to streamline operations, strengthen one's business, and scale success. Participants will gain expert guidance, learn strategies for growth, and connect with like-minded entrepreneurs. So we certainly don't want our entrepreneurs of Southwest Lansing to miss out on this opportunity. Again, you can go to lansingedc.com for more information. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilman Hussein. Do we have any further comments? Seeing none, Clerk Jackson.
No comment from the city clerk. So we're on to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has an event to share, you have one minute to speak on the details.
It doesn't sound like the mic is on.
Is it on? Okay. As I was saying, so I'm going to have to talk fast because I've got two events I've got to speak about at once. Both of them are Neighborhood Association meetings. First, the neighbors of Scott Woods this Wednesday will be holding their neighborhood meeting at 6:30 PM at Sliced By Saddleback, that is 3135 South Pennsylvania Avenue. And next Saturday, the Old Everett Neighborhood Association, as the president of that association, will be holding its Neighborhood Association meeting, also at 6:30, next Wednesday, at 3525 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, The Village Lansing. And we'll be discussing what to do with our grant process since we've just had to figure that stuff out and use Scott Woods as our fiduciary. So exciting. And we also need to fill in our vacant positions as well. So if you are interested in some of those vacant positions, vice president, secretary, treasurer, communications, or any of the regular board positions other than the Lions precinct, please fill them in.
Thank you. Any other community event announcements? Any community event announcements?
Lansing and Palmer Network is having our in-person 360 meeting this Wednesday, where we are also going to be hosting Zen City, who will be doing a presentation on the last four years' worth of surveys that they've been taking for the city of Lansing. If you're not familiar with Zen City, if you've seen Facebook ads, how do you feel about this? Or how do you feel about the city of Lansing asking for the government, or excuse me, asking for the people to fill out a survey on how they feel about the government, how they feel about the police department, so on and so forth. Wednesday, we will have Zen City there to present their findings. And I've heard the findings. I thought that they were very robust and transparent, something that I've had an issue with for the last couple of years. And I thought that what they were presenting, what Chief Backus showed me and what they presented to me was great. I thought it was good, good information for the people to hear. Especially if you're in this space and you're engaged at all, to hear what they were able to come up with that the city is using to base their vision on, I thought was interesting. So 12 PM at Foster Community Center, room 213, and there's also a Zoom option. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I've got a long list, I'm just going to rattle them off. So this Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the Fledge, we're having the Rent is Too Damn High Tenant Union meeting. And then on Sunday, March 16th, from 2:00 to 5:00, there is a rally for LGBTQ rights at the Capitol. And then on, I know, oh man, I just totally lost what I was going to say. I know, yeah, there's a 16th, and then, oh, sorry, April 5th, the Times of the Day or TBD, there's going to be another 50501 Capitol Rally to Remove Crap Politicians, Reverse Harmful Policies, Reclaim Democracy. That is on April 5th times TBD. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more community event announcements? All right, seeing none, then we're on to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matter. You have about a minute more to complete. If you're here for a show cause hearing, then you want to complete a green sheet. And if you're here to speak on items 10 through 32, which includes a public hearing, the consent agenda, resolution for action, then you want to sign in on the blue sheet. But if you just go back to Haley, Haley will make sure you're on the right sheet. But you have to sign in if you would like to speak. So now on to mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few things I want to share with council and the public that we have hired a woman named Courtney Squirewell. As many of you remember, in 2024, the Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Program awarded a competitive grant to the city of Lansing and 24 other cities across the country to do work at the Nexus of Sustainability and Racial Wealth Equity. This is the largest cohort of cities to participate. And the grant to us came in the form of a three-person innovation team, which we call an I-Team, who is being charged with engaging with residents and community leaders to study the root causes of these issues and how we can address them. So Courtney has joined our team as a director of the city's I-Team. I'm excited for her to get started. She has a background in nonprofit work and human-centered design and is imminently qualified. We're going to be hiring two more members of the team in the coming weeks before the work really ramps up. And all three of these positions are funded by Bloomberg Philanthropies and Johns Hopkins. Additionally, you have a resolution in front of you today with a grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies that will fund the personnel costs regarding this. So not only are we getting three staff, but Bloomberg is paying for computers, phones, training, transportation costs, all of that. So that's fantastic, if you ask me. So I'm excited for Courtney to get started. She's joined our cabinet and is directly involved. I know she's working on energy equity, electrification, tree planting, and heat reduction, a few other things. So as you see her around, we'll certainly encourage her to spend time with council members and learn your priorities. Moving on, I'm excited that we have 23 firefighters in training. So we all know we got a grant again for 15 firefighters, so we have 23 firefighters in training. So we're excited to see them come in soon. City Lansing held a really successful hiring fair, and we had 15 folks that were tested. So hopefully, we're going to bring them all in. I was going to mention congratulations to Sexton, but I cannot even come close to doing what Councilman Jackson did. So amen, Councilman. I was also going to mention Southwest Thrive, so that's been taken care of. Thank you, Councilman Hussein. Our Neighborhood Advisory Board deadline for neighborhood projects has been extended to March 21st at the request of some groups. So I hope you all and everyone out in the public will get folks to apply. We've got a lot of applications already, but we want as many as we can. We also have an arts grant that is online and live at our neighborhood site. $20,000 for arts grants. So both that and Neighborhood Advisory Board are on our Neighborhoods webpage. Councilman Hussein mentioned the Schmidt Parks Plan Meeting. We do have three others. So we're going to review our five-year Parks Plan Tuesday from 5:00 to 7:30 at Foster, Thursday from 5:00 to 7:30 at Fenner, and then Wednesday, March 26th, at 5:00 PM at Letts. So that'll cover all four wards. Tomorrow, the courts have a license restoration event that the courts and OFE are doing. Wednesday, there is a CSO sewer separation open house for Westside residents at Letts from 5:00 until 6:30. This is the project where we're not going to have the noise waiver, which was decided by council two weeks ago. March 27th, we have a public meeting on any questions about Michigan Avenue, which is going to be under construction again. There'll be an open house at Foster from 5:00 to 7:00. And then on March 24th, the construction restarts. On March 27th, we have a housing resource fair at Letts. And April 8th, we have a homelessness plan public meeting from 6:00 to 8:00 at Foster. April 23rd, we have a Neighborhood Resource Summit at Union Missionary Baptist Church. And then last but not least, our South MLK Art Contest. So we've got an art contest that the South MLK CIA folks are doing. That will be due by March 31st, and that is also on the LEDC website, which Councilman Hussein shared with you twice, and I'm going to share it with you a third time at Lansing LEDC. So I hope folks will apply for that. Lot of info, but wanted to make sure to get it all out there for our public. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being here tonight after such a tough month with Michigan Athletics.
If I can congratulate our state MSU hockey team and go green, because I need them to win so Michigan can maybe make the postseason. So go green.
Go white.
I'm shocked. We are to show cause hearing. We have several here. We have order to make, save, demolish to the owners of addresses 204 East Cavanaugh Road, 1612 Martin Street, 2407 Dunlap Street, 108 South Martin Luther King Boulevard, 3134 Viking Road, and 1212 Parkview Avenue.
Councilwoman Pelle Vanaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. And to Clerk Jackson, I am just going to go through each of the six properties with any recommendation from the Department of Economic Development and Planning. The first property here for show cause tonight is 204 East Cavanaugh. The original red tag date on this property was June 27th of 2022. This is a fire-damaged property. The SEV is listed as $49,554. The cost of repairs is listed as $51,177. And the recommendation is for a make, save, or demolish, 21-day make, save, or demolish. The next property is 1612 Martin Street. The original red tag date on this property is August 25th, 2023. The SEV is $29,100 and cost of repairs is listed as $82,009. The recommendation is for a 60-days make, save, or demolish order. The next property listed is 2407 Dunlap Street. The original red tag date on this property is May 4th, 2021. This is a fire-damaged structure. The SEV is $26,800. The cost of repair is listed as $49,680. And the recommendation, there was a, the first recommendation was a 90-days make, save, or demolish. We did receive an update from EDNP noting that there has been trade permit progress. They may entertain a 30-days table, but the primary recommendation was for 90-days make, save, or demolish. The next property is 108 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. The original red tag date on this property is June 5th, 2017. The SEV is listed as $5,700 and cost of repair listed as $117,000. I will say that on this property, we did receive updated information this evening, which each council member should have at your seats. And the recommendation was 60-days make, save, or demolish. But please take a look at the updated information you've received as well. The next property is 3134 Viking Road. The original red tag date is May 4th, 2021. The SEV is $60,900 and the estimated cost of repair is $72,900. The recommendation from EDNP, again, the original recommendation was a 90-days safe, make, or demolish. But EDP does note that there has been some permit progress on this property as well. And an updated recommendation would be from EDNP to table for 30 days, noting that trade permit progress. And finally, we have 1212 Parkview Avenue. The original red tag date on this property is June 28th, 2020. Again, this is a fire-damaged structure. The SEV is $11,200 with the estimated cost of repair $76,410. We do have a recommendation for 90-days to make, save, or demolish. And an update from EDNP recommending to move or make, save, or demolish with a 21-day timeline on that property. And as I close out this report out, I just want to remind all property owners who are here for show cause this evening that your properties will be on the public safety agenda tomorrow, March 11th at 4 o'clock PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll take our first speaker is Nick Counselor, who will be followed by Jeff Hayman. You come up to that microphone right there, and you'll have up to three minutes.
I recently purchased Cavanaugh Street. Since then, we have already pulled a mechanical permit to finish the mechanical work that needed to be done. The work that has already been done to Cavanaugh Street is as follows. New framing, new insulation that still needs the final inspection, new drywall, new roof, new siding, new furnace, a new water heater, all new ductwork, all new plumbing, all new drain lines, all new electrical, new panel, new lights, paint, and new doors. The property is already safe. We are just waiting on our final building permit to get the GPT test done so we can get heat and then just finish the final inspections for the electrical and plumbing. But everything is, we are at substantial completion, just a couple odds and ends that we need to finish. But besides that, the work is pretty much completed.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Hayman, followed by Alicia Flowers.
Good evening, everybody. Last meeting I had was, there was improvement from my property, and I had an inspection the following morning was approved for mechanical. And after that meeting we had, I had another inspection that was for installation, which also got approved. So things are, you know, improving and step by step, that's getting there. And the permits are getting approved. And I did take an extra week off from work just to push, get the property done. And we're going from there right now as we are speaking, and we are putting up drywall. So at the moment, that's where it's at. So that's pretty much it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alicia Flowers, followed by Brian Halmich.
Good evening, my name is Alisa Flowers. I don't have a lot to say. My paperwork that I turned in may give the story for you. In our recent work that we've done, when I looked at it, all I could say is, oh my God, she's waking up. Because they began to install windows, and it was as if her eyes were opening. So we're working on it, we're moving forward, and I'm excited. That's what I've got for you, she's a beauty. So that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brian Halmich, followed by Ken Agnapi.
Hello. I purchased the home from the city tax auction. It wasn't revealed that it was on a demolish order. So when I went to go pull permits, I was not allowed to pull permits. I actually had to wait a few months to get my first permits, and that time I-
Sir, could you speak a little closer to the mic for us? We're having a hard time hearing.
I said, I purchased the home from the city tax auction, but it wasn't disclosed that it was on demolish order. When I went to pull my permits, they wouldn't allow me to pull the permits because it was on demolish order. When I finally got the permits, it had been a few months. I had already paid a round of taxes, fines, fees for every month of the red tag. And then I started working on the property. I'm working on the property now. My electrical just passed an inspection, my plumbing just passed its rough inspection. I have North Winds in there doing the furnace and the water heater as we speak. They should have been done Friday, but it ran over, so that won't be done till this Friday. But I am currently working on the property. I put tens of thousands of dollars into the property with lawn care and everything I've done to try to bring it up as fast as I can as one person. But that's where I'm at with the property. Like I said, I did just have inspections on the plumbing and the electrical, they both passed. And just waiting on the building inspection so I can put the insulation and the drywall up. But that's where I'm at. But that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker for the show cause hearing is Ken, and he's speaking about 1212 Parkview.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm proud to tell you, this is about my fourth fire building in the city of Lansing, and I'm working on about, I've worked on about 15 to 20 homes in the city. Let's talk about Parkview. I'm excited to tell you that we are at the last leg. We've got two inspections left, three inspections left. The plumbing, HVAC, they are already scheduled for 18 and 19. And after that, we're going to schedule the building inspection. So I'm excited to continue to work with the city of Lansing to create homes for people. So I'm proud of the projects. And we should be finishing this soon. After we finish all the inspections, then we'll probably get the else ready for living. That's it.
Thank you. That was our last speaker for show cause, so we are to the referral of show cause hearing.
Public safety.
So then next, we are on to public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters consists of the two public hearing items, the noise special permit for Hoffbrose Inc., request for, to allow the combined sewer overflow 019 project, and to amend Chapter 404 to add Section 404.15 prohibiting unregistered vehicles from parking on public roadways, as well as the consent agenda and agenda for action. We have, the public may speak for up to three minutes and look for the overview for those two hearings first.
Yes. Councilman Brown.
Thank you. We have the noise special permit for Hoffman Brothers, request to allow the combined sewer overflow 019 project. And that is to permit work on Saturday from 8:00 A M. to 4:30 P M. throughout the project duration from April 2025 through November 22nd, 2025, and March 14th, 2026 through November 21st, 2026. On the north side of, North Chester Street on the west side, West Lapeer Street on the south side, and North Grant Avenue on the east side.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Vice President Carter.
Yes, we have here a ordinance that was presented back at our Committee of the Whole on February 24th by President Cost. This ordinance is stating to amend the Chapter 404 of Lansing Codified Ordinances, ordinances to add Section 404.15 to prohibit unregistered vehicles from parking on any public roadway, including but not limited to any alley, street, or highway. And this is also going to be parking violations of any person who violates subsection. Hereoff shall be responsible for a civil infraction and subject to penalties established in this section. And after tonight's hearing, this will be sent back to Committee of the Whole on March 24th.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Nicholas Zandi. And as Loretta comes up, I can assure that we have one written public comment in support of items number 27 and 32 on tonight's agenda.
Just briefly, because I wanted to look up stuff on your website from the email from the clerk's office to speak more informed about these issues, and the information's not there. It's not in the packet with a hyperlink that you can access. So I'm speaking without as much information as I would like to have had. On the noise permit, number 10, I am assuming that you will hear comments from the neighborhood similar to what you heard the other week, and that again, those residents will not be in favor of two entire summers of Saturday work within their neighborhoods in order to accommodate the contractor. On the amending the chapter for prohibiting unregistered vehicles, I'm all for that. I would think that you might want to tweak it a little just to be on the safe side and say prohibit unregistered and/or expired, because some vehicles will be registered, but the licenses have expired, the tags have expired. So just as a safeguard, you might want to spell that out. Redevelopment areas for the liquor licenses, I'm assuming these are the two that were discussed previously. If I'm wrong, forgive me. Again, it's because I couldn't access the information, and I think all the arguments that were raised before will still hold. The person asking for those liquor licenses has not got the best track record for keeping up his properties and operating them in an approved manner. Appointing a hearing officer for the cabaret license, I'm all for that. I'm sure that I'm not the only person that would like to see that license stripped, and I imagine there's probably a whole bunch of people that would agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Andy Makovich.
I'm Nicholas Zandi, and all I'm going to say about the, and I'm going to be speaking about a lot of these red tag properties since they're on the agenda. And all I'm going to say is, what the heck, city of Lansing? I thought there was only really like three red tagged properties in the old Ever neighborhood alone, but it turns out it's even higher from what I've heard, about six, for what I know about. And again, that's all I know about. So again, could be higher. And again, as I've said before, this is like a mess that you've been ignoring, ignoring for so many years. And the more and more of you ignored it, the more and more it just piled up. It's exactly like the messes you leave in your room when you're young and your parent keeps telling you, hey, you gotta clean that up and stop ignoring that. I can see I'm saying something about it. As, and, and as for the whole noise special permit thing, I am also very much opposed to it. And I also want to note that there's already enough noise as it is just north of our house on Green Lawn when it comes to the old McLaren building. So because of that, I do not support a full weekend of all that noisy construction in our neighborhood either. It is completely unnecessary, especially considering that there are already neighborhoods that are already having to deal with that. So why should we deal with more of that? And also on unregistered vehicles, I do think that this should be considered, though I do think that there should be a caveat that those, that should also include an expired ones, and that they should also help them either renew their license plates or also register their license plates in the first place, because I don't want to have to deal with so many unregistered vehicles, because on 496 alone, I found at least two unregistered vehicles that don't have their license plates. That is just completely unsafe and is a safety hazard waiting to happen. So there should be something done about it, though considering the Doge nonsense, they're going to say license plates renewal and registration, what's that? I'll, I'll tell you what, it's not. A polite suggestion, because there are regulations that need to be put in place for certain things. And again, as for the red tag thing, it should be case by case. If it's only got minor damages, then there should be some help on that situation. But if it's majorly damaged, property needs to go, no excuse. That's all I'm going to need to say, and I shall yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andy Makovich, followed by Gloria Hall.
Good afternoon. This is Andy Markvich, and it's regards to the metro building on MLK. And you have a meeting on the 11th tomorrow. Do you know what time and where?
The meeting's at 4:00 P M. tomorrow, sir.
4:00 P M. Thank you. Is it here at this office?
Directly behind us.
Okay. Just asking for more time to get this building demoed, but before we do, we are attempting to redevelop the area into apartments for the working class, not for low income. We're also going to need some time for possible Brownsfield before the building's demoed, otherwise it would not qualify. I am in contact with Eric Helsler. He's the gentleman I'm going to hire to consult me on this. And also, I want to let anybody know, still wants any lanes, bone lanes, make good countertops, all that kind of stuff. Also, I'm waiting to hear back from my environmental reports. And so just wanted to mention, maybe we should probably update the demo process for our law that we use from 1917, since it's over 100 years old. Maybe look at that. We also would, just like the gentleman earlier, in early process of trying to pull permits in the early stages of the demo, I wasn't allowed to do that either, and I'm a contractor, so that was a little weird. All right. So, but we do got a permit now. We are moving forward on a tear out permit to get the bone lanes and other materials that could be salvaged out of the building and move forward. Different subject, I hope you guys don't mind me touching on, is the red tag situation. I still think we should have a multi-system for red tags for people that don't get, this way they don't get evicted out of their home that same day they get a red tag. An example of Cameron, my neighbor down the road, he got red tagged on his house because the code enforcement person was unaware that his utilities were still on, but he, she thought they were off, so they got red tagged. Let's see. We got about the red tags, there's lots, the motivation for a lot of these red tags are the monthly payments that it generates for each of the red tags. It generally runs about $157 a month, which is pretty unfair to the homeowners that have to deal with trying to fix their property up and pay the red tag fee in the meantime, because those fees don't go away until after you get your CFOs. All right. Outside of that, I don't have any more comment about the red tag. And as far as the metro building, you guys have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Hall, followed by Alicia Flowers.
Hello again, Alisa Flowers.
Gloria Hall.
I turned in some more updated photos. We've, we now have floors installed, doors are going up, still waiting on the materials for the countertop. They're scheduled to be in on the 18th. Plumbing for the bathroom is being connected. And after that, I think we can do our final, yes, I just went blank. What is it called? When you do your final?
Inspection.
Inspection. And we'll be finished.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelsey Brienne. Oh, actually, Kelsey, if you're talking about Eastern, that will be later on. That concludes the public comment. We're to the referral of the public hearings.
Yeah. So the noise permit, special noise permit will go to City Ops, and then amending Chapter 404, Section 415, prohibit unregistered vehicles from parking public roadways will go to Cal.
Okay. Then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, so I am going to move, there's a few items for consent agenda. One is the grant acceptance for early voting grant. Another one is a grant application for Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program. There is a grant acceptance for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, grant land acquisition of four parcels for Adado Riverfront Park and Birch, Birchard Park. And then there's a grant acceptance for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Geyer BMX Track Improvements. Another grant acceptance from Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Grant. Donation acceptance from Women's Lawyers Associations of Michigan, Mid-Michigan, and individual donations to the Lansing Police Department Care Unit. And lastly, setting a short show cause hearing on orders to make safe or demolish to the owners of 1033 Shepherd Street. And with that, I move the consent agenda.
All right. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay. We are to resolution for action, and our first item is an appointment for Christina Campbell as a member of Michigan Avenue Corridor, Proven Authority, Board of Directors for a term expired June 30th, 2027.
Councilmember Garza.
All right. Thank you, Council. President Cost, I don't believe Ms. Campbell is with us today, so she filled out the application on November 7th of 2024. She came before the Development and Planning Committee on January 22nd. There's a series of questions asked of her at that time. Was she able to make the meetings? Was she willing to share any of the news from the work, to the work constituent contact meetings? She said yes. She assured she's committed. She is the regional manager for Community Engagement for Michigan, University of Michigan Health. She replaced former U M. Health Team Member John Shaski. Originally, this came in as an error. It was a Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority. We had amend the resolution to say Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority. And Development and Planning Committee took affirmative action today at March 10th. And with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Oppose. Passes.
Okay. Next, we are to reappointment of Sean Gale as an at-large member of the Human Relations Community Service Advisory Board for a term expired June 30th, 2028.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Yes, we have the reappointment for Sean Gale as an at-large member of the Human Relations and Community Service Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2028. It's a reappointment, and with that, I move the resolution.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
All right. Next, we're a special assessment for the Glenbird Commons for trashing grass abatement.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. We have the Glenbird Commons Trash Abatement Special Assessment that's done every year. The association years ago went out of business, and so now every year, the city comes between March 31st and November 30th, this year 2024, with a total of $23,758, approximately $51.99 per parcel, and for reimbursement. And so with that, I move the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further questions? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
All right. Next, we have to redevelopment area liquor license.
Okay. Councilman Brown.
Thank you. We have the redevelopment area liquor license for sea level at 200 South Washington Square, which is the former Grand Traverse Pie. And in 2006, in effort to promote economic development and qualifying communities, the Michigan Legislature passed Act 501 of Public Act of 2006, which provides a provision that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission may issue new public on-premise liquor license in order to allow cities to enhance the quality of life for their residents and visitors to their communities. By the issuance of a development district liquor license under Section 521A, 1B of Act, requires a proposed license premise to be located in one of the development district areas, such as the principal shopping district- areas, such as the principal shopping district, which we have deemed in Lansing, the City Council, as the principal shopping district in that area. And so they have apply, are applying for this to start a new fast casual seafood restaurant. And with that, I'll move the resolution.
Okay, do we have any questions? Councilman Brown, do you know if this license that they're going for, if we're borrowing it from a different municipality?
Could you speak to that, City Attorney?
Sure. Generally, redevelopment liquor licenses are not, they're sort of new, they spring into life. You've got a qualified redevelopment in a qualified district, so it doesn't come from either quota or from escrow.
Okay, all right, that was my question. Any further questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Passes six to one. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, we have the, excuse me, redevelopment area liquor license for La, La, Malut, Mulata, sorry about that, at 5334 South Martin Luther King Boulevard, for the same, as I just indicated, for the 200 South Washington. And this is a private event center in the old Elks Lodge across from the local 333. Since they came and presented, at the committee meeting, it was reported, which I provided, that there's currently being liquor sales and liquor promotion. So we have a flyer that was printed, as well as a few different promotions that the organization has done, and, you know, with the bar and Coronas and so on and so forth. If you all should have copies of this. So that's just for the file, and with that, I move the resolution.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any further questions or comments? I've got Councilmember Pelley Von Aglue, Hussein, and then Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Cost, and I guess my question for Councilmember Brown, I did see the materials that were provided to us this evening. Is it that this establishment was, has been serving liquor prior to this approval without any type of licensing? Was there any type of special license permitted for those specific events? Do we know any of that information?
When they came to the committee, which Councilman Garza was on as well, they indicated that they originally purchased the property with a different intended use, and they found out they weren't able to. And then I think they threw some type of party, and they found out after that, then they needed a cabaret license, so they applied for that. And then we have this information here. Does that answer your question, Councilwoman? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna go Councilman Brown, and then we have Councilman Hussein, and then Garza.
Oh, go ahead.
No, because you had your hand up, right?
And what's up after their hand?
Okay, no, he passed. Okay.
Yeah, so, I've expressed some concerns, too. This particular applicant is working with the LEDC, specifically Mr. Alex Watkins, to try to bring this kind of business model across the goal line. The struggle I have is right now, it's owned by A and Y Trucking LLC. They had actually, so this is a trucking company that this proprietor owns, and they had actually started to use this as a, which you referenced, as a kind of parking place for their trucks. And then learned from a number of complaints from neighbors and maybe even our commercial corridor inspector, that that was not a permitted use. And so, obviously, there are bills to pay at that particular site, there's a loan to pay, and so they began to have private parties in order to try to bring in some revenue. There were a number of complaints that came in from residents. That also precipitated a number of complaints to the LPD due to early morning partying, onsite consumption, particularly in the parking lot. We had a number of adjacent businesses, even across the street, that were complaining that there were some pouring, like over of essentially patrons to their property. And then we got word that now they are looking at potentially making this a sit-down restaurant. So it's just been, as a matter of fact, we just got complaints this past weekend of additional parties and late-night, you know, noise and early morning noise, things of that nature. So it's just, it does not necessarily sow a lot of confidence in this particular applicant. I have, however, talked to Mr. Alex Watkins, who I have a great deal of respect for, a number of times, and as recently as maybe 5:20 this evening. And he, you know, seems to believe in this particular applicant. I guess my question is, were there, were there questions asked of this applicant in terms of what inspired them, right, in terms of a restaurant? Do they have experience in terms of the restaurant industry, what are their long-term goals? What is it going to take to actually? This, this is not, right now, positioned to be a sit-down restaurant, right? So there's gonna be, I think, a considerable amount of investment that's, that's necessary, both outside and inside on this particular location. So I'm wondering if they have their, their business plan together, and if they have their, you know, what is their projection and their capital stack and all of these different things? So were any of those questions asked during committee? And we do have Mr. Watkins in the audience, so if you can answer that, maybe, maybe we could bring him up?
I mean, I think that, you know, when you're talking about a liquor license versus a business plan and working with LEDC, that's their responsibility. They did attend the meeting.
Right.
But I think, you know, as you indicated, bills have to be paid, we understand, but we also, you know, wanna make sure things are in order in being consistent, you know, at this body of making decisions based on people's liquor license and the statements that we've made. So, as related to, you know, their personal business and what their overall business plan is, wouldn't be relevant to, I think, this based on if you're selling alcohol now. That's just my personal way I'm looking at this, because this was reported, this isn't something that I'm looking, but it sounds like it's been consistently reported to you as well, Councilman Hussein.
And I guess what I was hoping, Councilman Brown, is that as part of the committee process, I would think that when you're talking about, because we typically do, right? We typically ask, when we're looking at a redevelopment area liquor license, we ask all of those questions. A lot of times, we'll even ask what the ratio was in terms of food to liquor, right, with regard to the menu. So that's just, that's just being thorough, it's part of the review process. I, I don't have answers to a number of those questions. Yes, we have had some concerns, obviously, that's, that's why I had a little bit of heartburn when I saw this. And I'm, to be honest with you, I'm leaning toward not supporting. But again, because they are working closely with the LEDC, I believe the Small Business Association, I'm hoping, I don't know, I mean, it doesn't sound like those things were
Well, that's why I was surprised, because LEDC came and represented them, and this is all going on, you know, and complaints are coming in, you said even this weekend, and then these are advertisements from the actual organization with liquor expressed, you know, to produce, you know, profits to pay the bill. So, I mean, that just shows what's actually happening on a factual basis.
I've got Councilman Garza, and then perhaps after Councilman Garza, we can ask Alex to come down and, and answer some of those questions.
Thank you, so I do wanna mention, so this, this flyer was from January of 2024, and at that evening, there was some concern with me, because when we showed up to work the next morning, across the street from the hall is where my place of business is, and there was liquor bottles and you name it, all scattered through the parking lot. We spent quite a bit of time cleaning it up. So I contacted, I went across the street, I contacted a couple of people that were standing outside. Ms. Lopez called me and reassured that that would never happen again, and since then, it hasn't happened again. This is something that, prior to her owning this facility, we had many situations where we had to put a gate up in front of our parking lot, because we'd come into work on Monday morning, and there would be, you know, four or five, you know, large garbage bags full of trash spread out through the parking lot. So since that party, it has not happened. She went and applied for a cabaret license, and the clerk granted her one. So they're able to have functions, she assured, that it was an MSU party, it would not happen again. She since then has attended the Martin Luther King Corridor Improvement Authority, and we encourage her to attend those future ones. And her daughter, right now, because I was at the committee meeting, her daughter is taking classes at the Wilson Talent Center for, to be a chef, and so they're gonna open the spot as like a sit-down brunch area, is what they mentioned. And, and so, I am supportive of it, because they have cleaned up the property quite a bit. I know that they applied for a facade grant, so they've planned on doing more work to it. And I'm just, I guess I'm thankful that they did clean up the property, and they're continuing to clean up the property, so I will be supportive.
I have Vice President Carter.
Thank you, President Cost. I think for me, I'm just looking at, thank you for the information that was provided today for, to the dais and to the council. I think for me, just to keep consistency based off of conversation that, from our previous council meeting, I look at the infractions or the complaints as Councilmember Hussein stated. Thank you for sharing the dates with this, Councilman Garza. However, there has still been issues and complaints to the neighborhood, the neighborhood neighbors, and so for this, and then the lack of consistency, because again, I think it was asked to OCA at the last meeting, we can't go off of promises. So, because they have the ideal to bring in a restaurant, or have ideal to bring in a different type of, I think it said, private weddings or whatnot, to make it an event space, we can't go off of promises. So with that, I more than likely will not be supporting this.
Do we have any further questions? Okay. Can we get a roll call vote on this, Mr. Clerk?
All right. Vice President Carter.
Nay.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Council President Cost.
No.
Councilmember Pelley Von Aglue.
No.
Councilmember Spatterford.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
No.
The motion fails. Onto the next item, the collective bargaining agreements, we have two agreements with the Teamsters 243.
Okay, Vice President Carter.
Yes, so, we do have a collective bargaining agreement for Teamsters 243 Clerical, Technical and Professional Unit for the period covering February 1st, 2025 through January 31st, 2026. What this included, just to summarize, it aligned with updated inclusive language that hadn't been updated in quite some time. It also aligns with the new Earn Sick Time Act for paid sick time. Leave time language was adjusted, overtime language and mileage and et cetera. So with that, it was discussed that though, these additional provisions to the collective bargaining agreement, the CBA for the period covering February 1st, 2025 through January 31st, 2026, contains the changes prior to the CBA. And so with this agreement, I will move the motion.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
The next collective bargaining agreement for Teamster 243 Supervisory Unit for the period covering February 1st, 2025 through January 31st, 2026. Again, very similar with the additional provisions, again, aligning with the updated language to cover the Earn Sick Time Act and then updated inclusive language, but this also gives a $250 allowance to supervisors for new boots. So again, that was for equipment, and again, with this resolution, I move.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, next, we're to appoint a hearing officer and set in a hearing on the cabaret license revocation and request for liquor license revocation to the Liquor Control Commission for CDDM Corporation DBA Dreamgirls at 5910 South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, so this is to set a hearing on the revocation, and in short, this is again for the cabaret license and the liquor license revocation, whereas specified in letters, there is alleged violations and reasons for the requested revocation for this cabaret and liquor license. There was a designated hearing officer that was shared today in committee of the whole, and that hearing on the matter is to serve the notice to the license holder and to any other person known to have any legal interest in such license. And therefore, the city council set the hearing to be held on Tuesday, March 25th, at 1:00 PM at the city clerk's office on the ninth floor at this location, 124 West Michigan.
Conference room.
Conference room, thank you. And with that, I make the motion.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. And for those that are wondering, the hearing officer is Raleigh Van Fausen from our Code Compliance EDP Department. Any further discussion? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, just really quickly, I'll try not to rehash everything, but I am in favor of assigning a hearing officer, however, I'm not in favor of assigning Mr. Van Fausen, who is a department head within the city. Not that he wouldn't do a good, fair job, but it's just a due process issue, because one of the prongs of due process is having a neutral fact-finder, even though ultimately, I think we do make the decision, the person generating the report is a department head, the person that's requesting the cabaret license be removed is also a department head. So they're all, they all meet together, they have the same interests, and just for that reason, I would not support this hearing officer, because I wouldn't want it to jeopardize, you know, the findings. And I think it should be someone that's less closely related to the administration and the whole, I guess, you know, team of, of the same desire, it seems like. So that's my reason, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson, and I would say to you that I believe on our last revocation that we did, we did get the full transcript in front of us. So not only do we have the hearing officer's findings, but we also had everything that was discussed and recorded. So we can, you know, we can judge for ourselves at the end of it, I think. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes six to one.
Okay, next, we're setting a hearing on the industrial facilities exemption certificate, transfer Altum Sales LLC to LG Energy Solution Michigan, Inc. at 8100 Davis Highway.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, earlier today, we had Carl and Lisa from LG, well, Carl from LEDC, and Lisa here to just share a little bit about this transfer. So LG Energy Solution Michigan, Inc. is requesting the transfer of existing industrial facilities exemption certificate 2022-006 from Altum Sales LLC pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1964. This is necessary to afford the applicant and the assessor and a representative of the affected taxing units an opportunity for a hearing on the LG Energy Solution Michigan application for transfer of existing industrial facilities exemption certificate. This public hearing will be set for Monday, March 24th, at 7:00, right here in the chambers. And again, this is for the LG Energy Solution Michigan application for transfer of industrial facilities exemption certificate 2022-006, located at 8100 Davis Highway, Lansing, Michigan. And with that, I make a motion.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, next, we have four resolutions tied to orders to make safe or demolish at four different properties.
Okay, Councilmember Pelley Von Aglue.
Thank you, President Cost. As Clerk Jackson just stated, we do have four properties to discuss. The first is 1232 North Washington Avenue. This property was originally red-tagged on June 27th, 2011. It was heard by the Lansing Demo Hearing Officer on August 22nd, 2024, and that officer determined that the building was unsafe and dangerous at that time. And we did have a public show cause hearing on this property, February 24th, 2025, and code enforcement has determined that compliance with the order from the Lansing Demo Hearing Officer has not occurred, and therefore, we have the resolution, and I will move the resolution, to make safe or demolish this property within 60 days of today.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Pellevanaglu.
Thank you. Next, we have the property at 1300 West Maple Street. This property was originally red tagged on October 20th, 2016. It was heard by the demo board on August 24th of 2024, and with orders to make safe or demolish by September 23rd, 2024. It has been said by the demo officer that the property has not been made safe to this date. With this property, I do want to just remind council members that we did receive updated photos that you should each have at your seats for 1300 Maple Street, just for your consideration as we move forward in this discussion. With that, I will move the resolution for orders to make safe or demolish within 60 days of today's date.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any? Council, Vice President Carter.
Yes, thank you, Council, President Koss. For this particular make safe or demolish for the owners of 1300 West Maple Street, I would like to ask the council to excuse my vote. I do have a indirect family member that is a partial owner for this particular property, and so with that, I want to ask council to excuse my vote.
Okay, so is that a? City Attorney.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is contained both in the charter and also it's codified in Rule 13 of the council rules. The question's been, or the request has been made to excuse the vote of the council member. Now it comes to the full council to vote on two-thirds, either to excuse or not excuse the vote in this instance. And then the question is called and it's as if it were a normal question with one, two, three, or five, well, if Mr. Jackson comes back, it would be a seven people voting on an eight-person question.
All right, so we have a proper motion in place on the recusal. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And then onto the question for the property, do we have any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Pellevanaglu.
Thank you. Moving on to the third property, we have 308 East Caesar Chavez Avenue. This is a commercial property that was originally red tagged on December 12th of 2017. This property did come before the demolition board on October 25th, 2024, with orders that this property be made safe or be demolished by November 26th of 2024. The recommendation stands that this property has not been made safe as of today, and I move the resolution to, with orders to make safe or demolish within 60 days of today's date.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. And then Councilwoman Pellevanaglu.
Thank you. This is the last property that we have for consideration. This is 5141 South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, the property formerly known as Metro Bowl. This was originally red tagged on August 30th of 2021, and the property, and the property owner were before the demo, excuse me, the property owner was before the demo board on October 25th of 2024. And moving forward as to today's date, code enforcement has determined that compliance with the order from the demo board has not occurred, and so I would move the resolution that this property be made safe or demolished within 60 days from today's date.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Right, then next we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. For anyone who'd like to speak on these city government-related matters, you have one more minute to sign in with Haley to complete the yellow form if you have not already done so. And with that, we are the reports of city offered boards and commissions, communication petitions.
Vice President Carter.
I motion that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by Council President Koss.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. And to the clerk, I would like to add two items to this as well, which is amending Part 12, Title VI, Form-Based Zone Coding, Second Amendment. I'm sorry, just one item. That'll be the one item.
Do you want to just refer it now?
I'm sorry, let's pass the resolution.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yep. So all those in favor, say aye. 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 Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, then we'll first do the items from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Fireworks display, Lansing lug nuts, and pyrotechnic fireworks at Jackson Field.
City operations.
All right, then we'll do the amendment of base code zoning.
Yes, we're going to refer that to development and planning.
Okay, then we are to the collective bargaining agreements that were just passed.
Community of the whole, place on file.
All right, then we're with the grant acceptance for cities for financial empowerment fund grant for legacy planning.
Ways and Means Internal Auditor.
We have traffic control orders 2505, 0607 regulating the parking on Post Oak Lane and Darian Drive.
City operations.
We are, support of the city Lansing community funded project request to Senator Gary Peters.
Ways and Means.
We have human relation community services general fund grant, second quarterly fiscal 25 reporting summary.
Place on file.
We have a sole source for public service department requesting for system specialties as a vendor of rotork slide gate accuators.
Ways and Means Internal Auditor.
All right, and communication petitions, we have two notices for the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for the same property, Hometown Liquors 2nd at 2701 South Cedar. First is a request to transfer ownership of escrow 2024 SDM license with Sunday sales permit for SDM mixed spirit and beer and wine tasting permit. And the second is a transfer ownership of a 2024 STD license with Sunday sales.
City operations.
All right, next to motion of excused absence, or?
Everyone is here.
Everyone's here and they're not here. Okay. Remarks by council members.
Do we have any further remarks, Councilman Hussein?
Just because the vote, the vote happened pretty quickly in terms of La Mulata. I wanted to explain just a little bit in terms of, I know I vacillated a bit in the moment. And the reason is that, let me, let me be frank, I would like nothing more than on that stretch of South MLK to have a sit-down restaurant. As a matter of fact, I talked to the mayor just this past weekend about, you know, how can we in a more concerted effort really get after attracting sit-down restaurants along that corridor? There is no excuse, frankly, that we don't have more sit-down restaurants in that area. We have dense residential, we have good median household income, we have incredible traffic counts. The problem is that we have a number of properties that have become blighted. With all due respect to the owner of Metro Bowl, it's, that is kind of what's happened along the corridor. Folks have come in, they bought these properties on the cheap, they speculated, not really knowing what they're going to do with that property. And then, you know, two or three different business models in, you know, they're coming to us with, with this type of request. I appreciate it in earnest them trying to work with the LEDC and the Small Business Association. The fact that even up to today, I, you know, couldn't get any answers in terms of experience in the restaurant industry, really no answers in terms of, you know, their long-term goals for this particular restaurant. There was no estimated budget in terms of opening the restaurant. And so I, you know, you just can't get past those when you mix those in with the, kind of the historic issues with this particular applicant. So I do want folks to know in Southwest Lansing that we continue to try as best we possibly can from our position to market that corridor, other nodes obviously in Southwest Lansing. And we know part of the livability and part of the commercial viability is tied to, as an example, sit-down restaurants, right, among many other things. And so we will continue the course. Unfortunately, I just don't think this applicant would have gotten us, I don't know, further down the field. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments by council members? Okay, none?
Remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
Okay, then we're back to public comment on city government-related matters. Remember, you have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Charles James, filed by Kelsey Brienne.
Can you hear me? I'm trying to get the 10% of property tax. I own the property at 3805 Colchester, and that's the property's pay for. But I served in the Army from '67 to '69 to '71. I think all soldiers should get a 10% of property tax reduction for their service in the service. Without us, you wouldn't have this city council, or the enemy, take over. Like Texas Roadhouse give 10 cents, Home Depot get 10 cents, AutoZone give 10 cents, they give it for our service in the Army. I prayed a price, all the soldiers prayed a price for, for the freedom of America. And I think that all soldiers, 10 cents ain't nothing. It's just a small token to show appreciation for the service that we did. And, you know, I just, I just paid for my property, but I don't own a house. My house is paid for, but I own, on, on the property taxes. So it can always something to take a loss. If I don't pay my taxes, I pay my taxes up. But I serving the service, I don't get no appreciation for it. And I think all soldiers of, of all America, sure, appreciate the soldiers that served in the military. Because if it wasn't for us, we wouldn't have nothing. And I don't, you know, that's all, and Lansing's the only one, and I, yes, the only one don't, don't appreciate the soldiers. I think you all should appreciate soldiers for, and I thank you for the house on, what you did, y'all did for the house on, the school on Walter French, is that? I appreciate that homeless people wouldn't, you know, have somewhere, it's very caring of y'all. But remember your soldiers who fought in Vietnam, Germany, who stood for this country. I don't, I know you give the 100 cents for disability, but why we got to be, be disability, can't get around, enjoy ourselves, you know? You know, and I want to, you know, that's all I'm standing for, really for the whole army, really. You go, usually go over the whole United States, show appreciation. Because without us, it wouldn't be no Kansas City Council, it wouldn't be no Lansing, because there's some people, terrible people out there. So I appreciate you listen to me. If I, if I got to walk the street, I want to know what I got to do. Get on a ballot, go to the governor, you know, I want to know something, you know? Because I'm really into this. So do I have to get on a ballot, or walk the streets? I'm willing to do that, you know? Because it's something that's need to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kelsey Brienne, filed by Belinda Fitzpatrick.
Hi, so I've been part of planning quite a few protests at the Capitol recently, and it's been really amazing to see the community involvement we have both in Lansing and all over the state coming here. And it's been really cool to see how we've been able to be a host to that. And I know there's quite a few people here that are fired up about Eastern or other services as other issues as well. And I would just love to see similar energy going to our housing crisis situation we have right now, not only housing, but unhoused crisis that we have. It sounds like Holy Cross is opening up new units, which is really awesome, new beds I heard at the State of the City, I got a really cool Andy Shore class there. But I would just, I would encourage, along with people who are really concerned about Eastern, to also be concerned about other things that are happening in the city and take this energy and putting it forward, you know, into other issues as well. And I would love to see some of you in the Capitol as we have further protests at the Capitol, just to represent the significant loss of services, rights that we are facing, not only as a country, but like here in Lansing as well. So I have been encouraged to see some of you, but we really need to have, we cannot lose hope, we cannot give in, we have to show up every day in the streets. And so I've been encouraged to see what I've, what I've been seeing, but I would love to see more, more effort in that and more media coverage, so, thank you. Also, I don't want to forget that Anthony Hulan did die in the jail underneath here, and I would love to see an investigation further into what happened to Anthony Hulan. I will never stop seeing his name. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Belinda Fitzpatrick, filed by Laura McCombs-Smelzer.
I want to encourage the city council to do a three-to-six-month moratorium on the demolition of Eastern High School. You know, not all change is progress, and not all work is constructive. I've heard that part of this has gone back to that they wanted to create jobs by building this mental health facility. Boy, this must give me a hard time. I usually just try to do things off the top of my head. I didn't graduate from Eastern High School. My cousin Leanne did in 1981. I attended St. Thomas Aquinas in South Gate. I'm from the Down River area of Detroit. They recently tore down my high school. I couldn't care less, you know? I'm not about these memories, but I'm about the loss of this potential future use. You know, I went down there to the Pickett today, and I saw more, I noticed more detail in that cement work than what I had ever noticed before. I, you know, I know I've been in that auditorium, I forget why, but I thought that auditorium was the most beautiful. It's just the most beautiful auditorium. So I want to look at not the loss of the memories, I want to look at the loss of the potential future use. And yes, the people who own it have been doing things that are going to make it even more cost prohibitive to do with that West Wing and the auditorium what could have been done to it. Walter French is an example of the possibility for redevelopment for housing. That is an area where people would love to have been in condominiums in that building. And a lot of the stuff, I just don't believe, I don't believe the rhetoric about the black mold. And I don't believe that they get to do whatever they want because it's their property, as our mayor has said, because nobody else gets to do just whatever they want because it's their property. Poor Bob Penny couldn't even have goats.
Thank you. Next is Laura McCombs-Smelzer, followed by Catherine Lynch.
That'll start, okay. First of all, I want to introduce myself. I'm Laura McCombs-Smelter, a graduate from Eastern High School, class of 1981. I'm a member of the Coalition, and I would like to tell you that we feel strongly that the West Wing and Auditorium can be preserved to benefit both UMH Sparrow, do you want to overhear better? And the new mental health community. I've sent all of you a PowerPoint today on the email, and I've also passed it out, so if you'd like to look at that with me, I'm going to reference that. So we think that the community plays a vital role in mental health care. There's many beneficial options that the West Wing and the Auditorium could provide for both UMHS and the community, and why the preservation of historic and architectural buildings are so valuable. We've always supported the need for a mental health facility while strongly believing that the West Wing and Auditorium of Eastern High School could be incorporated into the plan. So we believe it's a win-win, and I'm going to refer to this as if you want to look at that. I'm going, it's slide number three, but it has been proven and researched that the community is vital in the care of mental health care. The integration, support of social environments, as well as the social engagement are key important components of recovery for mental health patients. So mental disorders are subject to negative judgments and stigmatization, and it's often devastating effects on them. So social exclusion and social exclusion and stigma is something that the community can help get over. I gotta turn the page. It's taking up my time, too. So I'm gonna hurry and get through this, because I really want to do the visualization part of it. So we believe that it's important, and the community benefits are on this, that you can see from reducing isolation and so forth, and reducing the stigma and how beneficial it is. So we believe in the integration and not alienation. And that's what it's come down to. The integration of the community with mental health care is a research-proven, effective, integral part of improving mental health patient. The community wants to be, and most importantly, could and should be, a significant part of this process. Include the community. It is necessary for the success of the mental facility. Why should we preserve Eastern? There's a lot of uses, a lot of valuable options. Affordable housing for U of M Sparrow staff, affordable housing for traveling nurses, residents, interns, and mental health staff, partnership with LCC for nursing program, daycare center, administrative administration offices, training center, pharmacy, medical center, and an auditorium that can be used for the community, as well as conferences and things that the hospital can use for their shoot. So I'm just gonna do quickly, quickly. Imagine a beautiful welcome visitation center with all the beautiful things that Eastern has. All the plobic tile, all the woodwork, and so forth. And then the functions of the West Wing and the Auditorium with the impressive woodwork, and I've gone through some of those. The garden could be behind the West Wing and Auditorium. It makes a beautiful wall boundary that's already there. It doesn't need to be turned down, and I'm done.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Read the rest of the PowerPoint. Kitty's gonna finish it, but you can refer back to it.
Catherine Lynch filed by Julia McKenzie.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Lynch, City of Lansing resident, Eastern High School alumni, Eastern High School retired teacher, and current Eastern High School coach. Also a member of Coalition to preserve Eastern High School and promote mental health. I'd like to continue Laura's comments to validate the need to preserve the West Wing and the John Young Auditorium of Eastern High School. Some more important uses and functions of the Auditorium. With its impressive woodwork, vestibule, ticket booth, 1920's original light fixtures, and impeccable details would be a remarkable stage and event venue to be able to rent appropriate concerts, orchestras, dance recitals, movies, and plays, among other things. A stunning 600-seat venue for the utilization of U of M Health Sparrow's professional workshops and conferences to include teaching, sharing knowledge, and presentations concerning mental health and the welfare of other medical interests. By revising the lovely courtyard area with gardens and seating areas behind the West Wing and Auditoriums, so patients have a secure outdoor space with privacy and freedom, yet feel safe and protected. The West Wing and Auditorium already form the outside boundary. People are drawn to the quality of craftsmanship to witness history, culture, and architecture that is becoming more and more difficult to find in spaces in the U.S. Preserving important historic resources creates a visible connection with the community's history because they are unique, interesting, and inspiring. Historic buildings contribute to the health of many urban centers because people are attracted to the sense of culture and place. People are interested in the diverse use of Eastern. It is an architectural gem and is irreplaceable. Eastern's West Wing and Auditorium exhibit beautiful architecture that is exceptional now as it was when it was built almost 100 years ago. It could never be duplicated today. Benefits of preserving Eastern's West Wing and Auditorium. The Lansing community is very excited about the makeover of Walter French Junior High School with a total cost of refurbishing of just $39 million, just a lot, $39 million, top to bottom. Repurposing Eastern is just as feasible. It would be an impressive acknowledgement of its architecture, artistry, and workmanship, and it would emphasize and showcase the effort and vision of U of M Health Sparrow to honor the Lansing residents and their community by preserving a 100-year-old historic gem. The same way the community is excited by the Capitol Area Housing Project makeover of Walter French Junior High School, U of M Health Sparrow could be a Lansing hero saving the West Wing and Auditorium of Historic Eastern. Also to be eco and green-friendly by reusing and repurposing, not adding to the landfill. Conserve natural resources by preserving and rehabilitating historic buildings, reducing the amount of landfill waste, and so on. You have the, you have the.
Thank you. Next speaker is Julia McKenzie filed by Fay Norris.
Good evening. My name is Julia McKenzie. I just want to implore you to please save the Historic Eastern High School. It is such a regional cultural treasure. And I hope that if you have the learning and the sophistication to understand what the Arts and Crafts Movement and that whole architectural movement means, that you will please intervene in some way to preserve what's left of the structure. I think it's important to note that the Pond Brothers are U of M alumni. And I'm not sure if the people in charge are aware of that, but it seems especially tragic that they would be involved in destroying the work of their own students. This, you know, very special place that has so much cultural importance for not only the residents of Lansing, but residents throughout the mid-Michigan area. I'd also just like to say that the Gothic scholastic style is such an amazing draw for people. That's why we love, you know, the MSU campus. That's why we love the U of M campus, because of this architecture. I just hope that cooler heads will prevail and that, you know, the case for preservation can be made in your hearts and in your minds to save this beautiful treasure. I know there are financial concerns, and I think that everybody can make money in the preservation of the building. I don't want anyone to be out of a job or anything like that. I think that we have plenty of jobs that can be made in preservation. If you just think of one of those beautiful green tiles in the building, it's priceless. There's no pole barn in the world that's going to hold a candle to one of those beautiful little tiles. So I guess to conclude, just please consider preserving the building. Think of the ethical case, the cultural case, you know, all of the different reasons that a building like that is important. I think that your reputations will definitely be impacted by your decision. A building of this importance lives on in our hearts, and people are going to remember, long after all of these other decisions are made about minor matters, what happened to Eastern High School and the beautiful auditorium and the beautiful tile and the amazing woodwork. It's really kind of a big deal. So thank you for your time, and I just, again, I beg you to reconsider and find some way to save the building. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Fay Norris filed by Nick Zandi.
My name is Fay Norris, and I'm a concerned citizen and a proud 1968 graduate at Eastern High School. And my thinking is when, I'm always about compromise. And my thinking was when U of M bought Sparrow and moved to Lansing, which is a Spartan community, that it would be a good sign of public relations to consider our proposal of wanting to save the West Wing and the Auditorium. It would be a good community effort. I attended a council meeting in the fall, and a proposal was introduced by Ryan Cost to have the building study made to say, and we were asking that the West Wing and the Auditorium would be saved, and to do a building study and to have a historic district created. And I saw two council members agree to that, and I thought the vote was unanimous, but it was sent to a committee and died. I thought the historic district had been created because I waited a few months. And then I heard about a council meeting where U of M sent numerous skilled tradesmen who said keeping Historic Eastern would put them out of work. But that's not true, because we wanted the psychiatric center and just parts of Historic Eastern saved. And they also said, excuse me, that there was, if, U of M also said if there's too many objections made, that psychiatric hospital would be built elsewhere. And then possibly that's when it died in committee. U of M Health Sparrow kept saying to the media that costs kept changing. And they didn't show the plans for the Memorial Garden until March 4th to news media. And then that's when we ended up being able to see it. We hadn't even seen it before that time. And they talked about saving the West Wing as one of their proposals, but the cost of the bricks to maintain was gonna be too expensive for them. But we were not involved in any of those talks. So I would really feel like I would like to see a proposal made.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Next speaker is Nick Zandi filed by David Ellis.
Hello there. My name is Nicholas Zandi. So I've seen that part of Eastern has already been demolished. And if I'm gonna be honest, I'm appalled that you let such a historic building that could have been preserved for historical purposes, like as a museum or community center or a welcome center, and then you're just letting it being demolished and letting Sparrow demolish it. You know, this is another good case on why we should have public health care and why we should nationalize all health care companies. Because, and that includes Sparrow, because if that had happened, then Sparrow would have to do everything the city government tells them to, as well as the county government. And if they say, hey, you gotta preserve Eastern, you better do it. And also say this again, my best hope is that Everett and Sexton never receive that same fate, and that they don't ever consider doing the same thing with Lansing Technical, which is now a high school, which used to be Henry Hill, and is also a community center. Because our schools are very important for people to learn, and letting them get demolished like that, even after they've been moved to a new building, is just appalling. I'm not the biggest fan of the school district after the foam policy thing, but this is not the way to handle an old property. And also, I'm gonna talk a bit about something I've been dreading to talk about, but, about a fellow community member, but unfortunately, I have to. And that is the recent arrest of Zach Whaley for allegedly doing, let's just say, sending very inappropriate things to minors, which I will not be mentioning here because this is city TV, and I don't know if this is safe to air on city TV. But all I can say about him is, if found guilty, I hope he can make himself comfortable in prison, because that's probably gonna be his home for probably the rest of his life, all because he did what he did. And to the people on the West Side, since I know he was a West Side community member, my heart goes out to you because I would not want to be associated with a guy like that who did so, who did very terrible things and took advantage of several activists, not just me, but also Mike and Erica Lynn, as well as Clarida Duckett-Freeman, and said, hey, I'm on your side on this whole feminism and racial and sexual justice thing. But once it was found out that he did some really terrible things, I'm honestly, I feel sorry for the people who he took advantage of, because this is wrong on just so many levels. And I really don't think anyone should deserve to be taken advantage of like this.
Thank you. Next is David Ellis filed by Frederick McLoughlin.
David Ellis, downtown resident. I just wanted to quickly sort of finish up what I was saying at the last meeting and sort of clarify some things, because apparently I confused a lot of people. At the last meeting, I had talked about taxable value per acre and how there is a huge benefit of the city to focus on developing and fostering areas to have a higher value. To, the way I figured out that's best to explain this is to think, when I say taxable value per acre, if you are an hourly wage worker, think of that as your dollars per hour. That is how, that is the best way I can think of to explain, I can explain it, goodness. So to go farther with that analogy, when you are not at work and you are having a day off, you are not being paid, and that is perfectly fine. That is, none of us want to give up our days off to work more hours. We don't always have to think about every parcel in the city being the highest value. It's wonderful. I love our neighborhoods. My biggest point is that we need to balance lower taxable value areas with higher taxable value areas. When you look at the history of the city since the 1950s, we have done nothing but expand and expand and expand and rewrite our zoning to enforce that areas of the city that are not yet developed do not, they are already zoned to only be low-density housing. If you go, Potter Park Zoo is zoned, so if one day it was sold off to be developed, it would be developed as low-density housing. What I'm asking is, we have gutted our downtown with urban renewal. Focus on building that up. We have enormous tracts of land that you are not allowed to have dense housing on. Let's look into, can we add a little bit more housing to that? Can we help bring just an additional little bit of value to some of our neighborhoods? This isn't destroying any character. This isn't ruining any appeal of living there. This is just simply, we have, we are a virtually insolvent city at this point. We have some of the highest taxes in the entire region, yet everything seems, anytime I've talked about, like, I want more road safety, well, for that, we have money, we need more money, and we just don't have that loose cash. How is it that we are, I understand our balance, our budget's balanced, and I appreciate that. We can't say that we are like an affluent solvent city when we are highest taxes in the region and strapped for cash. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Frederick McLoughlin filed by Erica Lynn.
Yes, my name is Frederick McLoughlin, a Lansing resident. This is just a general comment on the city's webpage.
You can ignore that.
Okay. It has to do with attending meetings. What I would like to see happen is somewhere on the homepage for the city, that there is a single location that lists all meetings that the city has going on for that given date. Every single, I don't want to have to go and look for a choice and learn about the structure of the city and have to figure out somewhere else to go. I want to have one click that drops down a list of all the meetings going on. And the only other click I would want to make is to click on that one choice is to check out and see whether or not it's a committee I want to get familiar with. I'm in the process, as many of you know. You've seen me here and there, and sometimes I'm there, fortunately, and other times I end up. end up missing meetings. And the reason is that the meetings need to be listing not only what the meeting is, but the time, the date, the format of the meeting. Is it online? Is it in person? Is it both? Does the format, if it's online, does it require registration, which I really resent? I want, if it's online, I would like to make one click and be looking at the meeting. I don't want to have to continue to give out my information so that others have the possibility of doing something with it unnecessarily. So, I want to know if there are meetings that are not public, mention that next to the listing of the meeting. Say that it's not, and at that point, I know that I don't need to look any further. But I'm really tired of going to the city's website and just being confused about where to go from there. It sort of presupposes that I know something about how the structure of the city works, and I'm still learning that, as much as I've gone around. It doesn't mean that I know how the city is put together and so on. So, mention the date, the time, the location, whether it's physical or online. If there's a change in the meeting, mention that the meeting's been canceled or it hasn't been canceled. All of these things need to be kept up to date with one click, just one click that says "all meetings." Whatever you want to title it, "all meetings" is just a phrase that came to mind for me. But, in the process of getting to learn the city, it's enough of a challenge to just look at things by the topic of the meeting. So, and don't have any overlapping meetings. Don't schedule a meeting that's on at the same time as another meeting. I wanted to look at the Economic Development and Planning Committee, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, and I honestly couldn't find enough information to, I did a Google search, I went to the Lansing, the city's website, and I couldn't, I couldn't figure out how to get there. I don't know if it took place in 15 minutes or not.
Thank you. Erica Lynn, followed by Michael Lynn.
Good evening. Erica Lynn, lifelong Lansing resident. I'm going to use my time tonight to just simply read an email that you all received, each of you received in your inbox today. This was also sent to HRCS and the Department of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement. Good afternoon. I am reaching out to formally inform you all about an incident that should be cause for serious concern. I followed the proper channels to submit a formal complaint to the Churchill Downs Community Association regarding their board president's harmful, disrespectful, and offensive behavior, yet they have taken no perceivable action. At their most recent meeting, they announced plans to apply for 501(c)(3) status and seek city funding for their activities. This is why all that are included on this email are receiving this information today. To be clear, the CDCA has done nothing to address the harm caused to us, the very people they claim to serve. Whether they've even acknowledged this internally is unknown, but externally, there has been no accountability, no effort to repair trust, and no indication that they even believe this behavior is a problem. While I respect confidentiality and internal organization matters, the complete lack of transparency and action is unacceptable. I personally had to sit through being extremely uncomfortable while this person aggressively yelled, cursed, slapped the table, parroted disgusting and harmful racist tropes and generalizations, all while using the term referenced in my complaint in a very derogatory way over and over, and then stormed out, all in front of the Southwest Action Group Board and a sitting council member, Mr. Hussein. To lose control the way that he did is concerning, but most importantly, should not be accepted. This raises serious concerns about how this group operates, whose voices they value, and whether they're fit to receive public funding. I urge you to review the attached background information carefully. The city should not be in the business of financially supporting organizations that perpetuate harm and exclusion, rather than fostering real community engagement and trust. Below and attached is all of the background information and context information related to this incident, and you can also reach out to me if you have any questions. You will also receive copies of the attachments, as well as my official complaint, and again, I'm always available. Now, I bring this to you all in an official capacity, because as I said, it's sent to each of you individually as a body, as well as HRCS, as well as Departments of Neighborhood and Citizens Engagement. And why would that be? That would be because as a civic organization that they are registered under, it is very important to me as a citizen, as a very active and engaged citizen, as a person that co-founded an organization that is dedicated to uplifting and supporting and resourcing the Southwest group, excuse me, the Southwest neighborhood, and specifically Churchill Downs, being one of the neighborhoods of focus that the Village Lansing is focused on. This was disturbing on more than, more levels than I can even explain. It did what could almost be termed as irreparable harm and damage to that trust and credibility in order for us to build bridges between the community at large and this organization. So I just, again, ask you formally to review the information and make your own determinations.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Lynn, followed by Tierston Walters.
Thank you. So I'm going to be speaking on reference to similarly what Erica just spoke to, and from my position of the CEO of the Lansing Apartment Network, as well as a co-founder of the Village Lansing. And everything she said, I was the victim of that outburst that Councilman Hussein witnessed, and many of you have probably heard of before now, but you got to read the packet, and for anybody that's in the crowd, if you'd like one, I've got 14 of them with me, that expressly states what Jaques West said over and over again, and I won't say it here, although I had intended to, just to see you all squirm the same way we had to, as we heard it over and over, and as we asked, are you serious? You really are saying that? And I'll just, I'll just say this, it was, I can't stand these Lansing N-words. Only type of N-words in the City of Lansing are those who work for the state and those who want to work for the state. And I can only imagine that as that was brought to the Churchill Downs Association Board, is that it was given with an explanation from those who were witness to it. Well, I think it was this, well, I think it was that. Well, I'm here to tell you, as a black man sitting in that room, it was offensive, no matter that it came from a black man. I felt attacked. I felt that I was in a really dangerous situation, because my history of events like that usually turn out in violence. Whether or not it's me perpetrating it or responding to it, whatever the case is, I felt extremely under danger at that moment. So I had to remember that I was the CEO of the Lansing Apartment Network. I had to remember all the things that I've done to bring myself to where I am right now, not to respond in that in a negative way. So I bit the bullet, saying I'm going to take these channels that everybody tells me to. When somebody acts out and responds that way or does something like that, you take it through the appropriate channels. All the mentors have told me that, all the wisdom has been put on me. You can't respond with the way you want to all the time. You can't tell people, "F you," and you can't do all of those things in those settings when you're representing organizations such as Lansing Apartment Network or the Churchill Downs Association. So I took the proper channels. We went through the process of a board-certified organization who's supposed to be a civic-engaged department or organization with you all in the city. I know they've received funding prior. I know they're on your guys' website, and they basically, as you'll see in the packet, told me to go eat one. We handled it. You don't even get to know how we handled it, nor are we going to apologize for his behavior. And you show up to our meeting Tuesday, we're going to act like it didn't even happen. When you walk in, we're going to welcome you, ask you to sign our signing sheet, not even expressing that, you know what, we didn't get rid of that president, he's still here. He's actually going to be the one holding this meeting right now. We got none of that. There's a lot of documentation of what transpired and took place, and I know you guys can't do anything about it, but I know for one thing, this is an accountability point that I'll step back to when y'all give them funding. The next time they want to do an ice cream social and the City of Lansing gives five grand, I'm going to be right back here about this. Because this is what we do. When people act out, we think about, I like them, I care about, they're a nice person. Oh, Jaques let his mask down that day, and eight people seen it. Right? So it doesn't matter how we care or like him, or whatever the case is, the next place we're going is to his job. He works for the state of Michigan. We going all the way there with this, because until you step down, we're going to keep escalating it. And that's all we're asking. You just can't be in control of that situation over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Tierston Walters.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tierston Walters. I am an at-large member of your Lansing Park Board and the Vice Chair of your Neighborhood Advisory Board. I just want to say that the previous Saturday open house in the third ward was very well-attended, so I was excited to get the input, excited to see so many people, excited about their parks master plan. I am challenging the other ward representatives and at-large to get the numbers up for the remaining ones. Those will be the 11th, so tomorrow, 5:00 to 7:30. That'll be located at the Foster Community Center. Second ward will be March 13th, that'll be at the Fenner Nature Center, and the fourth wards will be March 26th, 5:00 to 7:30 at the Lutz Community Center. So, I'm looking forward to getting the input, really looking forward to getting the community involved. There's also a survey that's online that is available, that can be filled out to give us input on the master plan. Please fill it out, spread the word. We want this park system to truly, truly represent the community. So, excited for those open houses. The Neighborhood Advisory Board has also extended the grant deadline. Thank you Mayor Shore for letting the community know on that one as well. There's also a park matching program, where up to $5,000 in either Neighborhood Advisory Board or other fundraiser funds can be used to fund park infrastructure projects, because $10,000 goes a lot further than $5,000 with parks equipment. So, thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers.
No further business. We're adjourned at nine.